But yeah, my name is Clara Reinen. I'm a grad student here, so I am a member of COGS. I'm part of the Coordinating Committee as the Unity Chair. I am in my last year of grad school, so I just got my Library Science degree. And I am in my last year as an MFA student in Book Arts. So I was in a dual degree program. And now I'm just in the MFA portion of my degree. And I'm a teaching assistant, so I teach in the Center for the Book. I teach intro to Book Arts, which a lot of creative writing majors take. And just for my own sake, anything I say here tonight, I'm saying as a private citizen and as a candidate, not as an employee of the university. And so as far as my goals for City Council, it's my first time running for office. I was the school board representative for Student Council in high school. But as far as being an elected official in the public space, it's definitely something new to me, so I'm still learning as I go. But I'm really excited and I think that I have a lot of great ideas for Iowa City. And I know the, is the first question about platform? I don't want to get too much into if we're gonna cover it.
It's about basically what experiences do you have?
Yeah, so I can just
We can probably just do that now.
Get going into that, too. So as far as my experiences go, like I said, I haven't held public office formally before, whereas someone like Ruthina, she's been on the school board for a long time. So she's got both that professional experience and that practical experience having already been in the role. But even though I haven't been in public office before, I still think I have a lot of skills that really have helped prepare me for it. Particularly as a librarian, now that I have my Masters of Library and Information Science. In order to graduate from an accredited university, you have to demonstrate understanding of the American Library Association's core competencies. And that includes, you know, the skills that you typically think of for a librarian. So research skills and how to manage your library building and that sort of stuff. But there are also arms of those core competencies that are specifically designated for things like budgetary planning, financial planning, strategic planning. So part of graduating with your Masters of Library Science is being able to prove that you have those skills to be able to write policy for your library, to be able to set a budget, work with local government officials as part of the public sector, which most public libraries are. And one thing that I think really has prepared me well is that in Library Science School, they always tell us that being a librarian, it's just customer service. Like at the end of the day, whether you're helping somebody in a library find a book or you're helping them request a new book or you're helping them get in touch with a social worker or helping them use the Wi-Fi, that's customer service. And in my personal view, I think the way that city government, local government, honestly, all government, the way all government should work is as customer service, right? You're there to serve your constituents. You kind of have to put that personal ego aside, your own personal politics aside to a certain extent. Obviously, that's part of what gets you elected. But at the end of the day, once you're in office, you're working for the community. And so I think those people's skills and those interpersonal skills from being a librarian would transfer really well to City Council.
Great. If elected, what are your immediate policy priorities?
Yeah, this is what I, this is the question that I was wondering before I got to into it in the intro. But I have a few immediate policy things I would like to see. In particular, the city's union, AFSMI, is renegotiating. Technically, they're certifying, they're recertifying in the spring. So for the undergrads who aren't part of COGS in the room, in Iowa, whenever a union is going to renegotiate its contract, unless it's for wages specifically, they have to recertify their union first. So after AFSMI certifies, recertifies its union, then they'll go into contract negotiations. And so even though it's not necessarily set policy, one of my priorities is really making sure that if I'm elected, I'm ready to hit the ground running, helping the union with their contract negotiations. In particular, I really want to see how the city can leverage the fact that it typically has to hire outside legal counsel for union negotiations. But I think if the city wants to put its money where its mouth is and say that they care about their workers, they should either let the union pick which lawyer they would like to work with or, if possible, not hire an outside lawyer at all and take that money and use it towards something that would benefit the workers. And I think just modeling as a city councilor how we think union negotiations should go will go a really long way in making Iowa City more union-friendly in general. And so that's something I'm thinking about actively. In addition, water quality is something that's really important to me, especially because I want to stay in Iowa City long term. I want to raise a family here and I want to make sure that this is a city that I'm proud to do so in. And so I think for me, I really want to see what we can do to pass restrictive zoning ordinances to make sure that AI data centers can't be built here in Iowa City just to protect the integrity of our water quality. And I also really want to see what policies can be put in place for the city government to make sure that AI isn't being used in any context that would determine somebody's material condition. So for example, in some states, child protective services are already using algorithms to flag high-risk families. And really, like, if we're all being honest, we know that means black families. We know that means families that have been marginalized in other ways, whether it's single parents, low-income families. Like, we're just seeing the effects of historical biases and racism compound massively. So I really want to make sure that the city is being proactive about that. Because we've seen with something like flock cameras, for example, Iowa City passed an ordinance in 2013 to prohibit flock cameras, which are automatic license plate reading cameras. The city prohibited those in 2013, and we're just seeing that payoff now. There are a lot of other communities in the county that are currently trying to get flock cameras installed across their city. And Iowa City doesn't have to really worry about that at this point, right? Because we thought about that ahead of time. And so I think that's another place where having somebody who is younger and who has experience in information technology coming into the role of city councilor, I think could be really good to help safeguard Iowa City in the future. And aside from that, my other big priorities are just to make sure that we are Sorry, I'm just, Ashley eating her sandwiches cracking me up, in a good way. I'm so glad everybody's eating. The food is so good. And the other thing I really want to do is, and admittedly, this is still the area that I'm learning the most about, but I'm taking a lot of steps that I'd be happy to talk more about to educate myself on it. But I really want to see what Iowa City can do to support more permanent supportive housing. So for example, something like the LOST. That's the acronym for the sales tax that's going to be on the ballot in November. Part of that sales tax is set aside for supportive housing and hopefully, permanent supportive housing. So I'm hoping that I can work really closely with counselors like Counselor Mazaher Salee and Oliver Wine Line, Laura Burgess, folks who I already know are thinking about these sorts of issues to really make sure that we're pushing for more, not just supportive housing, but permanent supportive housing.
All right. And then, what is your plan to address intrusions from this, or, well, was that three? That was not three, I'm looking at the other list. How can we make housing more affordable in Iowa City, especially for renters? Would you support something like a tenants' union? And you've already kind of touched on this, but public housing.
Yeah, so I mean, I, the way I really approach this is I believe housing is a human right. And I think that in the ideal world, that means that housing is the responsibility of the government to a certain extent, right? I think it's like, we could have all sorts of conversations about the difference between personal property and private property. And like, those are conversations to be had. But I think in general, it's important to know that, from my own perspective, I think the government should be responsible for taking care of its citizens. Not even just citizens, community members, constituents, people who aren't US citizens, whether they, you know, have immigrated legally or not. Like, people are people and they deserve to be taken care of. And so I think for something like renting, the state has made it really hard. Things like rent freezes are illegal. Iowa City, for a while, even after the state made it legal for landlords not to accept Section 8 vouchers, Iowa City still had it written that landlords needed to, until the state said, actually, you can't do that anymore. So there are a lot of things Iowa City has already tried to do under the idea of home rule, which is basically this concept that local jurisdictions know what's best for their communities. And the state of Iowa says they support home rule. But we've seen a lot of attacks on it, particularly like when Johnson County and Iowa City tried to ban plastic bags or when they tried to raise the minimum wage. And so I think for somebody who's in a city councilor position, or even like Ruthina on school board or other elected officials, I think when our hands are tied when it comes to policy, the, like, the first and best thing we can do is vocally support alternative options. So something like a tenants' union, I am in total support of. I think collective action is a great way to get things done where the government has stalled and either can't do something or, in some contexts with elected officials, refuses to do something, either from fear, cowardice, lack of knowledge, whatever it may be. And so I think as a city councilor, vocally supporting a tenants' union can go a long way. And I've also been starting to explore ways that we could maybe incentivize. I'm thinking if we can't, if we can't place restrictions, what are incentives that we could use instead to encourage people to do the right thing? I know in the past, that hasn't always worked very well. And it also does become an issue because then you get into this sticky situation where you're, if you over-incentivize, that can hurt, for example, current tenants who might not have their lease renewed because a landlord wants to pursue this attractive incentive if they were to put somebody with a housing voucher in there. So I think it's this really delicate balance of taking action, but also thinking about the consequences. And I think that's a great place where, somewhere like City Council, the city of Iowa City has so many people who are already experts on these matters. I think for something like City Council, something that's been reassuring to me going into this race is that like, nobody expects me to be an expert on everything.
We do probably two-ish, three-ish minutes for questions, so we should probably
I'm working on it, that's the, that's the long and short.
Yeah, so you've touched on this a little bit, but what steps will you take to support and engage with the unionized workforces that you oversee?
Yeah.
How will you support local labor unions in our community?
Yeah, so I think as far as supporting local labor unions outside of the city, once again, it goes back to being vocally in support of. And I think, you know, for example, if a local boss is union busting, I think it can go a long way for a city councilor to call that boss and say, what are you doing? Your employees have a right to form a union. Even if I, as a city councilor, couldn't punish that business owner in any sort of way or impose any sort of negative consequences, I think there is a lot of social capital that a city councilor holds. And I think that that public pressure can go a long way. As far as unionized workers in the city of Iowa City, I think what's really important is that whenever there's a union, unfortunately, you can't assume best intentions from people in positions of power. So the way City Council works is all city councilors manage the city manager. The city manager is the one who kind of oversees contract negotiations for unions. And so my plan, if elected, is to tell Jeff Ruin, the city manager, immediately, I expect to be CC'd on every email regarding the union, no matter how big, no matter how small, even if it's just a worker complaining that there's never a new roll of toilet paper to replace the old one. I want to be on those emails and I want to be in every contract negotiation possible. Because like I said, public pressure goes a long way, so. I tightened that one up a lot.
What is your plan to address intrusions from the state and the Trump administration? And this has also sort of been addressed.
Yeah, I guess it's the downside to long-winded answers is that I end up half-covering something and then have to go back and catch up. But I think that is somewhere where something like home rule can come in handy. For example, the trans rights resolution. Technically, in Iowa City, it's the Equal Protections Resolution. The Equal Protections Resolution that was passed locally has even more power than the one that was passed at the county level. So there are specific ways where we see city municipalities having more power than the county, than the state. And so I think as far as intrusions from the federal government and the state government, one of the other things that I think is the best is that City Council is technically nonpartisan. And what that means, I feel like in national politics, locals, in all politics, we waste a lot of time asking about political identity. Oh, this person's a Republican, I won't work with them. This person's a Democrat, I won't work with them. And I think we can cut through a lot of that bullshit the second we say, we're nonpartisan. We're just here to serve people. And I think that in and of itself already kind of, it catches people off-guard a little bit. And I think it really forces people to talk about the issues and the people that are being affected rather than how that might look optically for a national platform or a personal platform.
Great answer. What is the ideal role of police in our community and what should our criminal justice system look like?
Yeah, that's a big question. I mean, my personal take is that I, I really hate that public safety has just become synonymous with policing. I think there are a lot of things that we can do that I would consider public safety that are way more beneficial than our current model of policing. So even permanent supportive housing, housing in general, we see that one of the biggest ways to cut down on crime is to provide people with a place to live. Building housing is not always that simple, but I think the second we reframe a lot of these other issues that people use as kind of a bargaining chip to get more money for police, like, like crimes committed by people experiencing homelessness, like some of these other issues. If we can just reframe how we think about public safety, not to be synonymous with police, but bike lanes. How many, how many bikers do you know that get hit by cars or almost hit by cars because we don't have protected bike lanes in Iowa City? Or because, you know, free transportation has been massively helpful for making sure that people can get around to appointments. Even that, I'm sure, has helped reduce crime rates. And so I think just thinking about how we can expand public safety beyond policing is really important. In my ideal world, we would take a ton of money away from the police. And I don't care who hears me say that. I think the police get way too much money. I don't think it's helpful. And I think it's really just part of this prison industrial complex to make money and get cheap labor, right? Because of the way Back the Blue laws work in Iowa, we can't take money away from police departments once we've given it to them. At least, that's my current understanding of the law. I'm still working on that. But I think that is a place where if we think about what we're also including in the definition of public safety, like protected bike lanes, for example, if we consider that public safety, does that mean we could reallocate part of the police budget? So those are things I really want to find creative solutions for.
Right. How will you use your office to protect immigrants and international students against ICE harassment?
Yeah, that's a really important question. I think something like the university, or excuse me, like the city already having that flock ordinance in place goes a long way. And I actually have been talking to some other folks on City Council because it seems like City Council might have the ability to tell the university to take their flock cameras off of city property or property that's shared. So the easiest example I can think of is at the stoplight on Madison Street and Iowa Avenue, which is, if you're going up, it's the big hill that looks up at Old Capitol. Like, if you're coming from the west side past EPB, like, there's a flock camera right there. And if that flock camera is on city property and not university property, we might actually be able to ask the university to take that off. So I'm really committed to getting as many flock cameras off of what is technically city property as possible. And I think also just vocally supporting, vocally supporting the communities that are being affected. And if there was a circumstance where, for example, like Kim Reynolds tried to send the National Guard into Iowa City, I would be okay putting myself on the line as a city councilor and getting arrested to make sure that people aren't detained. I think as soon as you're in an elected position, you have a lot of power. And being arrested as an elected official for being at a protest does not necessarily carry the same long-term consequences that being arrested as an undergrad or a grad student does. And so I think my position as an elected official would allow me to publicly take part in more direct action in a way that I think ultimately would be really beneficial in getting more eyes on those actions. And I think regardless of whether I get elected or not, I have really enjoyed seeing other counselors up for reelection be pushed further to the left because I'm so vocally to the left. So I'm hoping that regardless of what happens, I can at least push them as far left as possible.
Sure. What steps will you take to protect the civil rights of racial and ethnic minorities, elderly individuals, disabled people, and other marginalized groups?
Yeah, one of the reasons I decided to run for City Council was because I was, I mean, I thought it was really heartbreaking every time I would go to City Council with my trans friends, week after week, and I would hear them like literally beg for the city to do anything. And they would just say, I'm sorry, our hands are tied. Or this would put too much attention on us, or, or, or. Like, I heard all of these excuses and not a lot of people willing to work harder to find a solution. And I think one thing that would be really beneficial for me is that I know Ruthina talked just a little bit about the pay structure and how school board isn't paid at all. City counselors are paid a small stipend. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but it's more than I get paid as a TA at the university. And so what's cool to me is that if I got elected, I've heard other city counselors say things like, oh, we don't really get paid that much. Or like, it's a small stipend. But for me, that's more than I'm getting paid now. And so I think it, it gives me more freedom in the fact that I already know how to live off of the amount of money that I'm making. And I know I'd be able to dedicate more time per week to finding creative solutions. I mean, even if we needed to, you know, sue the state to make sure that people are protected in Iowa City, I think that's what we need to do. When, when governments are being fascist, we have to fight back. And I don't think respectability politics really has a place when we're talking about human rights and people's ability to live freely.
Absolutely. We turned out at the wrong time. What distinguishes you from others in this race?
Yeah, so I've already talked about that a lot. I think one thing that really distinguishes me is that, I guess in the race, I align myself a lot with Oliver. I helped with Oliver's campaign. And one thing I really respect about Oliver is that he says what he means and he's gonna do what he can to get it done. And I think that's something that I find really important as well. I would like to think that I don't hold back. Whether that's always a good thing or not, I don't know. My parents would probably say it's not, but that's a whole different thing. I also think that, you know, part of being younger in the race is that I, I feel like I have a lot more teeth in the game, you know what I mean? Like, like I've said, like, I would love to raise my kids here. And I'm not just saying that as a campaign point. Like, I want to have a family, I want to have kids, I want to send them to public school. And I'm only gonna do that if I feel like I've made the world a good enough place that I can raise my children in the world without feeling guilty about it. And I think, too, I, I'm still figuring out the best way to address this. But I do know that there, I think, I don't have as many conflicts of interest as other people that are up for reelection. I just think there are less areas for me to get entangled in what would benefit myself the most. Because even though I am a homeowner and not a renter, I think I still identify much more with the working class than other folks who are in the race. And I think that that means I'm gonna fight harder for the working class than other candidates.
Sure. And last, but certainly not least, where can people reach you if they want to get involved with your campaign?
Yeah, so ClaraForIowaCity is my website. And it's four spelled out, not the number four. That's also my email, it's claraforiowacity@proton.me. And I am having my first, like, campaign kickoff event this Sunday from four to seven at Happy Hollow Park. Hopefully, there will be food from Sage Grill. I know, I know. So I'm excited about that. And we're gonna start door knocking soon, so we'll have a volunteer sign up at the kickoff event.
All right. Questions?
Yeah. Okay, so the biggest thing that I'm, that I learned recently about City Council recently, when I started looking into this race, is that apparently in Iowa City, the mayor is not directly elected, it's chosen by the City Council.
Yeah.
Also saw just now, because I was stupid and didn't look it up earlier, that the City Council chooses the members of the board that made that role stay earlier sometime recently in the past year.
Uh huh.
Okay. Would you be willing or want to elect or choose numbers to that board that would be willing to make the city a more democratic place to live? By democratic, I don't mean the party, I mean like literally a democracy and not chosen by some nine people that most members of the city don't even know?
Yeah, yeah, so just to clarify, we're talking about changing the rules so that the mayor is also elected and not appointed?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, to be 100% honest, I haven't thought about it very much. Because in, in my understanding at least, it's actually very funny. The, the technical phrase for our type of mayoral role here in Iowa City is a weak mayor, which is really funny. And, and personally, like, when I've thought about it in the past, I've always felt like it's relatively democratic because a weak mayor does not have the same kinds of power that an elected mayor does. So in Coralville, for example, where they elect their mayor, their mayor doesn't get a vote on City Council, on agenda items and things like that. And they have different power in other areas. Whereas in Iowa City, I almost think of the mayor more as a chairperson. So the mayor is who's running the meetings. They do, the mayor does do the State of Iowa City, like, address every year, similar to like State of the Union address, but on a local level. And then as far as I know, the only other major powers that the mayor in Iowa City has that the rest of City Council does not is they are the one who technically approves proclamations. So when there are proclamations for things like Hispanic Heritage Month, like, it's technically the mayor that makes those proclamations. And then the only other thing is when we're introducing resolutions to City Council, it can either be introduced by three counselors. So for example, the boycott resolution that we passed, I believe that was introduced by Mazaher, Oliver, and Laura. Or the mayor can put an agenda item on by himself or theirself or herself. So in my own take, as far as I've understood it, that's really the only place where there's an uneven distribution of power. But if that's, if that's a concern you have, like, I'd love to talk more about it. Because if there's like a blind spot that I'm not seeing, I want to know what that is. Yeah, and if it's something that people think needs to change, I'd be open to that for sure. Yeah.
Other questions?
I was just gonna ask about the sales tax thing.
Oh, yeah.
I hadn't heard about that.
Oh, yeah, so I forget. Oh, yeah, Lo, it's called LOST. It stands for Local Option Sales Tax. And as far as I know, it's going to be on the ballot in November in Iowa City, Coralville, and North Liberty. And because of the way the state works, it's one of the only ways that we can actively be raising money for supportive housing and permanent supportive housing. So off the top of my head, I'm not 100% sure how the LOST sales tax is allocated. But I was at the City Council meeting where they approved the language for it. And I know they specifically made sure that there was language that, I believe it's at least 25% of the sales tax will go toward housing specifically. So, and that's a really interesting example of like, I know Oliver personally doesn't love, like, Oliver wouldn't have wanted a sales tax to be the way that we get money for housing. But everyone on City Council unanimously voted yes to put it on the ballot because at this point, it's kind of like the best option we have. And so that's something I've been thinking about a lot, too. Like, am I, am I prepared to vote yes on things that I don't personally believe in because I know that it's the best for the community? And I think that's another place where having a city councilor who will transparently say things like, I don't like this, but at this point, it's the best option. Or the same way that Ruthina said, I didn't want to close an elementary school, but it's the only way we could knock up positions. I think even just that line of transparency goes a long way. And I know the Affordable Housing Trust has been posting a lot about the LOST sales tax, so they might be someone to look at if you want to learn more about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had something like that in Georgia called SLOST for Special Local Option Sales Tax.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a, I've told people I'm a one-issue voter, I vote for higher taxes, so.
Hell, yeah.
All right.
Cool.
Any, yeah?
I have a little question.
Yeah.
There is, you know, compromise because
Yeah.
Brother is, um, you know, compromised because of illness he's got. Um, if, since we have a crazy man in office right now who, uh, uh, is doing, like, allowing RFK to like, take away all mandates of, you know, vaccines, would you, as a council member, be able to in some means, support like mandates of that sort within the city of Iowa City?
If it's allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, if it's a, I mean, like, pers, so that is, I, I'm getting my COVID vaccine whether they say I can or not. Like, I'm just gonna do it. I have had COVID three times, and I've gotten every vaccine and every booster, and I still wear a mask when I go to the grocery store, or when I go sh, like, I, I try to be very cognizant of that, and I still think it's a massive issue. Um, and that is something, are you also from Iowa City?
I'm not from Iowa.
You're not, okay.
I'm from
That's okay, I just didn't know, cause I knew the three of you were already friends. Okay, well, I was gonna say, that was something cool during the pandemic, like, even though the state had a mandate that said cities couldn't require masks, I, I don't remember exactly how the language worked, but I know that city council did something where even though the city couldn't require it, businesses could require it, or maybe it was the language about how they described the face coverings, but that's an example of where they could kind of circumvent state law. And I think if there's one thing a librarian knows how to do, it's how to get creative when there's not money to do something else. Um, and so I would love to do as much as I can with the weirdest language I can. Um, if that, if I do get elected, uh, the city attorney is gonna be so sick of me asking questions, but that's what he gets paid to do. So, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Cool.
Well, thank you all so much.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
Your time.